That and to see the community use that like they do, always crowded claret tell. I think they have to kick them out every night, but so grateful for that. Are we are building a sewer, a new sewer plant, an upgraded, better technology to serve this community. It's filled, it's called a BNR, it's filtered. It will better treat the water as the regulations come down from the state and the government to do that. You know as well as I do that right now there is so many places that you can have dinner in this town and lunch, and that continues to grow as our, as our base wines for our food services. What an awesome thing to continue to progress. Our ball fields, when I think about when I was growing up, the only thing that was important was baseball. And Dale Robbins, our director of our parks and recs, he can tell you that soccer and pickleball, and especially soccer, are huge and, and growing. And our ball fields and our soccer fields and our recreation, our parks are so well maintained and taken care of. This town is kept clean. It is well groomed. Our SFCN, who is our station, they have recently, and I think they're done, fibered the home. And now they're starting a new thing to help the, it's called a ring, so that if we get trouble, that we have a redundant system so that we don't go down, we don't take any problems. Our power department, the only time we have an outage in this town is if a Mylar balloon gets in our, one of our transfer stations, it seems like, or a car hits one of our poles. And it's restored so quickly. It amazes me that we get our responses, the council, that we get response from them. And it's usually just 45 minutes and we'll have the power back up and working. Our streets, what a, what a, what a great community, our streets are awesome. We used to laugh because we used to always talk about a shock company, which I won't mention, would always go to Payson to test their shocks, because some of those roads were pretty rough roads over there. And ours weren't really, but we've improved those over the last five to eight years with the program that was put in line by the streets department. We, I know we can't control the, when we return to our heavenly father, our cemetery is very well maintained. Some days them guys are very busy taking care of that process, and it goes on all week long. And what a great job they do at that cemetery. The thing that I'm most proud of is the, the, our employees at Spanish Fork. Our, each one of our departments, they are dedicated. When you talk to them, they're excited about their work, if you catch them on a good day. Of course, they have bad days. But they keep our community progressing, and they keep our community clean, and they keep Spanish Fork a great place that you want to live and raise a family here. We recently received an, kind of, an award that we're one of the safest cities. That is something that's not easy in this time, and, and what a credit to our public safety and Chief Adams and the processes, and they, and they don't stop because they hear that, okay, we reached the top, we're done. The progress continues. And that's what's happened in Spanish Fork, with all assets of our community that we continue to improve. Our parks and recs, our trails are awesome. I know most, that is one of the most requested is our trails and our pathways that we have is used so much in this community, and what a great thing for our healthy and living. The pride part of that comes to a personal. As I mentioned, sorry, that All Abilities Park, I am so proud of that, that it's completed and it's done, to watch and drive by there and see the things. I'm proud of our community, I'm proud of each one of the departments in this community, and how they care about the Spanish Fork. I'm born and raised here, my parents were born and raised, my grandparents born and raised, so my roots are pretty deep in Spanish Fork. Sometimes that's not the case, but when I meet people, we recently moved, as we meet these people, and they're not lifers, but they love Spanish Fork, and they moved here for those reasons that we continue our pride and progress. And, and I just wanted to mention, I know there's a lot of things going on in our community. Yes, we are growing, yes, there are homes being built all over the place, and that is a part of that. But that's also the people that are coming here and becoming citizens of Spanish Fork and making this a part of their department. We have some awesome departments, we have some awesome people in this building, the administrators, and our economic development, these guys help us to go forward. Each one of the people that work in this building take care of all that paper and bookwork and everything else that goes on, and they do a great job. And, and continue to do that on a day in, day in, day out basis. It always amazes me at the end of yesterday, Fiesta Days, the park across the street has hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people, we have the carnival here, and the next day it's clean and picked up and ready to move forward. What a, what an awesome thing, and it just amazes me how quick they get it done and keep our community clean. And I'm grateful to each one of them, and I hope they're listening and know that each one of us, we care, and we do have pride for Spanish Fork. And I, and I love our, our logo, pride and progress and the bell. So thank you. Hello. Say a word of prayer. Our dear Father in heaven, we humbly bow our heads before thee this, this evening, and invite thy spirit to be here as we discuss the needs of this community. We are grateful for the opportunity that we have to live here. We ask to continue to help us to make those decisions that keep this community growing and safe, and that we will continue to serve those citizens who, who we represent in a pleasing manner. We ask you to please watch over those in our public safety, our fire, and our ambulance, and our policemen, to keep them safe as they keep our community safe, keep their families safe when they're away. We are grateful for the opportunity that we have to live in this community, and we ask and say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Will the audience please rise and repeat the pledge after me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for that. Uh, that leads us to, the next agenda item is public comments. Anybody here in the public that would like to address the council tonight? Okay. None of these kids wanted to come up and say anything yet, huh? All right. Not yet. Let's go to council comments, we'll start with council member Beck.
Okay. A couple of fun things this month that are coming up, um, the Little Miss Pageant will be at Spanish Fork High School this Thursday night at 7:00 PM. And then next Saturday night, May 29th, at 7:00 PM will be the Miss Spanish Fork Pageant. And then, are you going to be talking about the Memorial Day event? Hopefully someone will be, I think that's, um, at the cemetery, Monday, Memorial Day at 10:30 AM. And I think that is all, oh, the summer reading program, you can go sign up there. Scott, right, is it ready right now? Okay. There's been a lot of great prizes for kids and adults of all ages, so even if you're a grown up and love reading, go sign up because you can get a prize every week, um, they're drawing names. And then, just a quick little shout out, I work at Utah Valley Magazine, and it's our annual best of Utah Valley contest, and this just got released. And so many awards throughout Spanish Fork. This one's for the Oaks Golf, Golf Course, um, one of the top golf courses in the valley. Fiesta Day is one of the best events in the valley. Spanish Fork Rodeo, the best rodeo in the valley. Then so many businesses are recognized as either, either the best or the top three. And so Spanish Fork is just recognized not only being great, like Chad has said, but at, by our residents, but throughout the valley. So I just appreciate our employees that, that have that levable, level of expertise to be awarded and win awards like this. And so Dale, I'll give, why don't you come up and take this to the Oaks as one of the best golf courses? I know you guys work hard up there to make it like that. So that's all I have.
Sometimes it's set up in a way that makes Kier frustrated with the golf course, but it's more his putting, not the golf course's problem.
That's all me.
Is that, oh, that's all him?
It's all me.
Thanks, council member Beck. Council member Scopes?
Uh, no, uh, Memorial Day program, 10:00 AM, City Cemetery. I have nothing else to add.
Perfect.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Council member Argon?
Thanks, Mike. Just a couple of meetings to review. So we had our airport board meeting, as our airport continues to get requests for more improvement. Chris Charles is doing a good job down there. He's working trying to improve the entrance to our airport, so it's more palatable, looks nicer, and looks like a little more airport, some of them hangers are, been there a long time, and working trying to get them cleaned up. Also had a, a water board meeting with Sumwa, uh, and they're working with this URS water as Mapleton and Springville now beginning their block notice thing, start using that water. Those requests has to come through Sumwa, cause we have to order that water and put it in the pipeline. So, um, uh, that water is starting to be used, and it's precious, a precious lot of water that, uh, this valley's receiving from Strawberry Reservoir. And they're also have a piece of property that they're, uh, marketing to sell, that was, uh, was bought with the intention of having a regional sewer plan on it, um, uh, down in, uh, Lake Shore. Um, and that didn't, that process didn't pan out, so they're trying to sell that, and they've had, they've actually had a couple of offers. So they're working through them to sell this property, and then that money would just go back to the nine commu, or nine cities that are association with Sumwa. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Couple of Chamber of Commerce events. First of all, we had the Chamber Rotary Golf Tournament last week, a big success. Thanks for all the businesses showing up and participating in a day of golf, but also just contributing money to a good cause. The, the reason for that event is to, to provide scholarships to our local seniors graduating high school, of all, all the high schools in the area. And the cool thing about these scholarships, or these are scholarships that aren't tacked on to another scholarship that maybe someone's getting, so these scholarships go to, to, to kids that, that maybe, um, this is the only scholarship they get, and, and it helps further their education. So I don't know how many years in a row this is going on, but the Chamber and the Rotary together put a great, a great day of golf together, and it's just a lot of great people that get together and, and raise money for, for an awesome cause. So thanks again for all the hard work that goes into that, all the preparation. Uh, feels like maybe we can, both organizations can just breathe a little bit after, after that one's done. Chamber of Commerce upcoming events is the new networking lunch on the 20th, uh, so in two days, at the Veterans Memorial Building, for Chamber members to come there and, and network and eat lunch. And then on the 21st, uh, so this week, Friday, is the ribbon, ribbon cutting for the River Bridge Event Center. So down on South Main Street, if you've looked to the, to the east, and you've seen a cool building over there, uh, in what used to be a farm field, um, we're excited for the Shepherds, uh, for that event, and that's at noon, uh, and, and we'll cut a ribbon, and they'll officially be underway. Uh, I don't know, marrying all sorts of people, right? Marrying, marrying everybody, so, or, or having the reception of such. So excited for them, uh, and, and for that ribbon cutting. The Rotary Club, what's going on with them, um, meeting every week, but again, another maybe breath from the Rotary Club, when your kids are at the high school doing their track meets, um, the, the Rotary Club is, uh, they're manning the, the, uh, the snack shack. The funny event of the day that I was there to help was kids coming up and looking at the menu that's just on a, you know, big piece of paper. We wrote down what you can get, popsicles, popcorn, or water, you know, basically, but the kids would ask, uh, what's the specials? You know? I'm like, I don't know, everything's a dollar, you know, how much you got? So just appreciate Dr. France and, uh, and, uh, our presidency that, that takes care of so many things at the, at the Rotary Club and, and just serves our community well, and, and that's a service that they've been providing the, the last couple of busy weeks. Onto our active and healthy initiative and Fit City Initiative. I sent, um, uh, our PIO, uh, a, a picture from earlier today, that Susan Chapman and Julie Lee and myself, uh, that, that Nick has brought up here. Uh, if you, if you don't know who Julie Lee is, um, you can Google her when you get a second, but she is a local resident of Spanish Fork here that wanted to meet with us today and just see how, um, kind of our missions could, could coincide of, of being a fit city, helping people be more active and healthy, both, both mentally and physically. She is in a lot of the, the schools right now, for Nebo School District, talking about, um, self, um, self admiration, um, you know, a lot of self-help, a lot of positive thinking. And it's something that, um, that if you have kids in school, you, you know that it's a, it's a good thing for, for our teachers to learn. She's a former teacher. Again, you can, just, just her countenance and the, the way she, the passion she had for this, um, I hope it's not too personal, but you would not know that after this she was headed to, to sit with her sister who is, uh, suffering from, from cancer and ailments and stuff. She just brings a light about a mission, uh, to, to help people, and help kids especially. And so it was great to take an hour today, meet with her, and see how our efforts can coincide on making, um, making any and all resources available to our community, both teachers and students of, of, of just being better and healthier mentally and physically. So thanks to her for, for taking the time, thanks for her passion. We're looking forward to, to the future with her. Next is a, is what I consider a really cool event that, that, I don't know, that, that the Fit City Initiative is just gonna try to piggyback on, but we've invited some, some guests here tonight that are the newest movie stars of Spanish Fork City. Uh, and, uh, and so we're really excited to, to maybe show you this, uh, this little clip that was on the Today Show, um, just about a week ago, I think, uh, and then, and then invite these great citizens and people up to be recognized. So go ahead, Nick.
I'm gonna pray the sound waves.
Talking when we saw it.
You guys might get a call to be on Studio Chatter next.
And that's, that's a step up from the Today Show.
When you're on the Today Show, then you can come on Studio Chatter.
Bigger viewership.
Bigger viewership, yep, yep. I'll tell you, while we're, we're waiting, um, it was really neat to, for Seth, our city manager, to, he keeps us pretty informed, as Chad alluded to, of what's happening, what's going on in the city, and, um, just be prepared. When I clicked on this at, at home, um, my wife Amber wasn't in the room, and then walked in the room, and I'm wiping my eyes, trying to get, you know, turn around, and she's like, what's wrong? Like allergies, it's springtime, you know? But it was really, um, seeing, seeing your story and how touching it is, so we'll get right to it.
It was almost long enough.
Almost?
Yeah, it was almost long enough.
Yeah.
You're the one in the hot seat.
Oh, I hate it.
Yeah, no pressure here, all eyes on me.
So isolated, so when she sent that card, it's, it just was really isolating and difficult.
Here we go.
It just was really isolating and difficult, really stressful time.
It was a challenging year for 39-year-old teacher Amy Baird.
I was teaching online, trying to work while also trying to teach my children.
Last April, she drove down a familiar road near her home in Spanish Fork, Utah, where tulips had bloomed for over a decade.
My eyes started tearing up because it was just like this cold winter and this hard time, and just all of a sudden I saw these flowers, and it was just beautiful and peaceful, and it was just like home. I really wanted to let this person know that I was grateful.
So she decided to send a Hallmark card and selected a simple message, what you do matters.
Hello there, I hope this letter finds you well. My name is Amy.
The mystery gardener was 79-year-old Marion Curtis, a widow living by herself.
I was so alone and so isolated, so when she sent that card that said, what you do matters, I thought, really? Really?
Marion and her late husband Paul planted the garden each year as an ode to Marion's childhood, growing up in the Netherlands.
We used to jump on the heaps of tulips and play around in them, get the colors on their clothes, so it's a piece of home.
A few weeks later, Marion sent a letter back.
Dear Amy, five years ago, I lost my husband, and life has been lonely. I have stage four kidney cancer, it's spread from my kidney to my pancreas.
Nobody should feel like they're alone, so as soon as I found that out, I was like, okay, I'm gonna have a doctor, and we'll just make sure that she's taken care of.
And then she started texting me every day. How are you feeling? How did radiation go? Are you doing okay?
And when the summer batch of tulip seeds arrived to be planted, Marion was faced with the reality of her illness.
She'd gone through chemo and radiation recently, and she was feeling really weak, and so I was able to reach out on my Facebook group with my book club, and so that they were able to come and help with the plant team.
And as summer turned to fall, Amy and her book club kept coming up with new ways to make Marion feel loved.
In November, someone brought something over every single day. Can you believe that? For them to care that much is unbelievable, because all I did was plant flowers.
I mean, then for Christmas time, we put twinkle lights outside and some little candy cane lights, and it was just fun to try and like lighten things up a little bit for, and help her fill the Christmas spirit.
You see these tulips? What do you say about that? Isn't that fantastic? And if anyone says, where'd you get that? And I'll say, your friend Amy, my friend Amy, found me and gave it to me. and gave it to me."
How would you say your lives have been impacted?
Mine has been uplifted. I think I could ask her anything, and she would be willing to come and help.
Absolutely. We just care about each other. I look forward to her text messages and her phone calls. I mean, look at her smile. She's so kind and sweet and wonderful. Like, I just love her.
It's like the heavens parted, and here comes this angel, and her name is Amy.
Today, the garden is in full bloom, as it was this same time last year, a colorful reminder of the power of hope and friendship. And to think that if you had never reached out, there might not have been a bed of tulips this year.
That is true. It is kind of amazing that the impact that one little thing can have.
We don't see the whole picture. We don't know what people are going through in this world. A kind word, do it. Smile. Do something. Yes. Look what it has done for me, right?
Don't you just love them? Oh, Marion is still fighting her battle, but her condition has stabilized. In fact, she sent us these photos enjoying a camping trip just this week. And she and Amy are both vaccinated now and get together, ladies, every week.
Oh, Donna, what a beautiful story. And I love that it took, you know, the world shutting down a little bit first for everybody to slow down and notice. And then it created this beautiful friendship.
Right. One card, I could cry for an hour. I need Twinkies, and I need to be under the cupboard.
Thanks, Nick. Would Amy and Marion like to come up and explain yourself for making us, making us, you know, cry on national TV? And I'm sure everybody, I'm sure everybody else. But, you know, we were sent that by Seth and watching that. And what stood out, not only about just how lovely you two are and all of you that, you know, just notice flowers and reach out to say thank you for that gift and then a friendship that comes of it, just a beautiful reminder of how important the human connection is and seeing people. And like you said, taking that initiative when you have that feeling of you don't know what people are going through. So just be kind and say a kind thing. So thank you for that, and thank you for coming tonight. And please explain yourself of what you've done. Yeah, yeah, come up here. So, yeah, so the camera, again, Mayor LaFson always says millions of viewers are watching right here, and they would love to hear from you.
I think the video just shares it all. I think it's just that we need to reach out to each other, because everybody's going through things. So I'm glad it gave that message and it gave people hope. I've had people reach out to me and say that it helped them feel happy to know that there's good in the world, because a lot of times people feel like there's not a lot of good things happening. But there's good things happening everywhere. So, and just to be that person.
Well, so my husband and I started it about 20 years ago to put flowers there. I don't know to whom the ground belongs. I really don't know. I know it isn't mine, but there used to be weeds there, and Amy's ward once came and cut the weeds down. And then my husband and I thought, "Well, it's behind our fence. Maybe we ought to do something about it." Because I felt embarrassed that another ward came and cut weeds down behind our fence. So then we just started doing, planting tulips and daffodils. And for about 15 years, we kept up the Icelandic monument until my husband passed away. But I want you to know, we've had a lot of help also from, I went and visited with Mr. Bushman. I don't know if he still works here. And once I asked Chad, who works in Parks and Rec, for mulch, and they came and brought it, because I was buying bags, and it's rather expensive and heavy. And last year, I begged, I really begged for water, because all these years we were watering it with the hoses going over the fence. And after my husband died, it was just too hard on me to keep dragging those hoses and trying to figure out how an irrigation system works. So they did. You guys put in a water line with sprinklers. So we're planning to keep the flowers going in the summer as well as early spring. So we'll do our best, as long as I'm alive, I guess. So I want to thank the city also, because you guys have been wonderful. Yeah.
Thank you.
That corner's so beautiful.
Something that I know we've noticed, and now the whole city will notice, it'll become somewhat of a famous little area that if people didn't know it before, they're gonna drive up Third South and about 10th or 11th East and see some beautiful tulips. And thank you for your service to the city. Thank you. Thank you for serving each other and being an example to so many of us citizens around the world. We got a little something. It's great. People like all of you that we love to have represent Spanish Fork. And so we've got a few little bags here that if you'll take them, as many as we got for you and everybody in the book club, that have a little bit of Spanish Fork swag in it. So anywhere that, you know, we're piggybacking on the Today Show fame. And we hope that Council Member Beck can get him booked on Studio Chatter relatively quick.
Yeah. My big question is, what are you guys reading right now?
Stargirl. My house. Stargirl.
Okay, Stargirl.
And can I say that this kindness started way before the tulips, and is will keep going way after.
Awesome. You guys are fantastic. Thank you so much.
One, two, three.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Dad's still thinking about it. He's gonna have problems the rest of the meeting. Dad's still thinking about it. He's gonna have problems the rest of the meeting. Well, very good. Thanks again for everybody coming. Thanks for the good things that are happening in our city and the ability to recognize those people. Spanish Fork 101, who's got to follow? Who's got to follow that? Scott?
Thanks. Good luck after that. But I would like to claim Amy is one of our own. Amy is the Chair of the Library Board, and so it's awesome to see someone who not only represents the library very well with everything that she does for us at the library, but is just a wonderful resident and community member here in Spanish Fork. So we'll take a little bit of credit for the awesome stuff that Amy does. But today, here to talk a little bit about our annual summer reading program. It's nothing new. We've done this for, gosh, I don't know how many years, but it's been kind of a big focal point for us at the library. And surprisingly, the library is most busy during the summer, which is good, because in schools and in public libraries, we often refer to the summer slide, which is, school gets out and kids have a lot of awesome things that they can and would like to do over the summer months, right? Go hang out at the pool, hang out with friends, participate in recreation programs. But often, that's at the demise of their academic success and achievement that they had in the previous school year. And numerous studies have shown that during those summer months, kids digress significantly in their academic progress and achievement, and have to make that up when they get back to school in the fall. Some studies indicate that they lose anywhere between one and two months' worth of progress in mathematics and in reading. And so public libraries across the nation work diligently throughout the summer months to encourage our youth to continue to read, to learn, and grow and expand their horizons and knowledge throughout the summer, so that when they get back to school in the fall, they aren't as far behind as they otherwise would be. And studies have also shown that there are greater impacts on individuals and families with a lower socioeconomic status. They have less access to different resources to learn and grow throughout the summer months. And so what's the solution? Well, though it being a drought, we certainly would never encourage anyone to keep their tap or their faucet running. But in the library world, we often refer to keep the learning faucet running throughout the summer months. Have that trickle effect that they're constantly learning and exposing themselves to new knowledge and whatnot, so that that water or that knowledge is continually flowing. And so that is our suggestion and solution, not to keep the physical water running, but the knowledge water flowing throughout the summer months. And how we do that, and how oftentimes many libraries do that, is through a summer reading program. And again, we focus on all age groups. It's not just for the children specifically. It's a lot of focus on them because they're still in school, but certainly a great opportunity for adults to learn and grow throughout the summer months as well. So the summer reading program at the library, again, we target all age groups, from children up to adults. On the children's side, we have a lot of different age groups and do, you know, bi-weekly drawings for prizes. It's really simple. They take a bookmark home, and for every 20 minutes they read, they check off their bookmark. When they've hit 10 days of 20 minutes or more, they bring that in and receive a prize. And at the end of the summer, if they complete five bookmarks, they get a free book, some other fun prizes and whatnots, as well as prize drawings throughout the summer. Teens, kind of the same thing, average of 20 minutes a day throughout the week, awesome prizes that they can receive throughout the summer with some great end-of-summer grand prize drawings. I think we've pulled together a couple sets of AirPods that we'll give away as some end-of-summer grand prize for the teens. And then again, for the adults, an opportunity for them to do something that maybe they otherwise wouldn't do this year. We're focusing it on genres, to get adults to look outside to different genres that they may not read. I might have a hard time with the romance genre. That's not my go-to, so that'll probably be the last one I do this summer, but it's on my list. And again, awesome prizes that we'll be giving away throughout the summer months. And a lot of that is thanks to some wonderful community sponsors, local businesses that really stepped up to the plate, and have provided a lot of awesome prizes that we'll be able to give away and also help support local businesses. So here's just kind of a snapshot of those great community partners that we have that support the library. One thing that I'm really excited about this year is we've tapped into some city resources, and we will be providing some different prizes thanks to some city departments. So we've worked with the Spanish Fork Airport, and we'll be giving away a few free airplane rides for kids that they can get. We've worked with the Police Department, and we're gonna do a couple ride-alongs for some kids as well, so get them exposed to different areas of the city services that we provide and help build some positive relationships between some of those departments, as well as the Oaks Golf Course was generous in donating some rounds of golf. So again, a big thanks to all of our wonderful community partners that help make this program a success and possible year after year. So pretty easy sign-up. Residents can go to read.spanishfork.org to sign up online. Always, we would love for you to come in and sign up in the library and get your first bookmark to keep tracking your progress. But again, a great resource for parents that I know might be looking for ways to keep their kids occupied in a productive manner this summer and help with their academic progress these summer months. So we look forward to seeing our residents and their families here at the Spanish Fork Library throughout the summer. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate that. That takes us to number seven, consent items.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Argyle and seconded by Councilman Scobes for the consent items. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Perfect. That passes, takes us to number eight, public hearing for proposed text amendments to Title 15. The proposed amendments would modify the requirements for accessory dwelling units in accessory structures. Dave Anderson.
Thank you. Two changes are proposed here. First of all, it's proposed that you approve a maximum size that pertains to habitable living space for external or detached accessory apartments, accessory dwelling units, ADUs. We think that's important, because recently we've talked to some people that essentially have proposed to build a home in a backyard, meaning 2,000, 2,500 square feet. We have some height limits that come into play with what we're talking about here. But really, we haven't believed that the intent of allowing accessory apartments in detached accessory buildings really was to do that, to construct something that would be that massive, that it would have some propensity, we think, to impact neighbors. So not that 1,000 square feet is a magic number. We think that likely would coincide, for example, with maybe limiting the number of bedrooms to two, although there's certainly no guarantee of that, which we think, again, is a good step towards simply doing what we can now, before somebody applies, to construct detached accessory apartment so that it doesn't have a significant impact on neighbors, which really is what the intent is. Kind of to go hand in glove with that, the state legislature recently made it so that we can only require one off-street parking space for internal ADUs. So we've separated out the parking requirement for internal ADUs. That would be like a basement apartment or something that is under the same roof as the primary dwelling. So the proposal is to separate out that requirement for internal ADUs, so that we can require one additional parking space for external ADUs, which we think, again, is an important step towards simply making sure that there's adequate parking. That historically has been one of the main sources of complaints that neighbors have had about people using basements as apartments and that sort of thing. So we would go back to the requirement that we had in place for detached ADUs to require essentially two parking spaces for the detached ADU, because the state law does allow us to do that, interestingly enough, for detached. We can require whatever number ultimately you would care to. But they do limit it for internal ADUs at one. So two for external, one for internal. And those are the proposed changes.
Okay. Any questions for Dave? If not, let's go into a public hearing about it. I'd entertain a motion to do that.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilmember Beck to go into a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in public hearing. Anybody here to speak to that? Okay. Entertained a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilmember Beck to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any other questions for Dave from this body? Dave, what counts as one parking? If somebody rents out their basement, that's an ADU, what counts as one parking stall in the driveway? Or do they have to pour new concrete to make a new drive parking space?
A driveway can qualify if it's nine feet wide by 18 feet deep, and it's unobstructed, so somebody could enter that space, and that qualifies as a parking space. We do differentiate a little bit also between what is called tandem parking. So for example, if you're counting two spaces in a garage towards the required parking, then we wouldn't allow you to count two spaces that you might have in the driveway that are immediately behind those spaces in the garage. Tandem is the phrase that we use for that. And that's prohibited. But certainly in some cases, somebody would probably have to pour an additional pad, maybe on the side of the driveway, if it's just a driveway to accommodate maybe access to a two-car garage. I think that's been pretty common over the years. That has to be paved.
The detached, that would be the detached ADU?
For the detached, they would actually have to provide a total of four, two for the primary dwelling, and then at least two others for the accessory apartment. For the detached, for attached, it would be a total of three.
Perfect. Anything else for Dave on this? Stacy's trying to pressure Kir into...
Peer pressure. I move we approve the proposed text amendments to Title 15, modifying the requirements for accessory dwelling units in accessory structures.
Second, a motion by Councilman Scobes... A motion by Councilman Scobes, seconded by Councilman Mendenhall to approve the proposed text amendment to Title 15 as outlined by Councilman Scobes. This needs to be a roll call vote. Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall, aye. Councilman Scobes?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
That passes. Perfect. On to number nine, new business, Utah West Annexation, acceptance for further study. The proposal includes 119 acres located at approximately 1150 north, 900 west.
Yes, once again, thank you. We've had a few of these on your agenda lately where we are simply asking the city council to accept a proposed annexation for further study. In this case, it's a little bit larger annexation than we've seen in a little while at 120 or so acres. It's located south and west of the airport is how I'd describe it, west of 300 west. I believe really the main driver for the property owners here applying at this time for annexation is the city's project that's extending a sewer line in the vicinity of the annexation area that would be able to serve this area for development. I think it's unlikely that we probably would see a development immediately after the property were annexed, you know, should that run its course and perhaps happen later this summer. But again, what's on your agenda tonight is simply the proposal for you to accept it so that we start the formal annexation process and start some study work with the petitioners of the annexation before we take it to the Planning Commission for a recommendation and you probably in two or three months for actual action on the annexation.
Perfect. Any questions for Dave on this item?
I'll move to approve the Utah West Annexation.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Beck, seconded by Councilman Argyle to approve the Utah West Annexation acceptance for further study. Roll call vote here as well. I'll start with me. Aye. Councilman Scobes?
Aye.
Councilmember Beck?
Aye.
Councilmember Argyle?
Aye.
That passes. Before we go to, excuse for, I think we have closed session after this. I'd be remiss if I didn't direct people to the city's Facebook, or excuse me, social media pages about the Public Works Appreciation Week. So Chad mentioned this, how all departments of the city are awesome and they certainly are. And this week, we're going to be celebrating the Public Works Department with fantastic pictures and Nick going to places that some of us declined to go when we're asked to go on tour.
I showered twice.
You did after that? And it still didn't work.
I'm sure PIO can throw these places. So he's earning his merit badges.
He does that when you're elected here. It's like, here's what you have, here's where you have to go. Yeah. Yep. So thank you, Public Works Department. You're awesome. You keep us, you keep us going. So, okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we adjourn to closed session for reasonably imminent litigation and land transaction.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Scobes, seconded by Councilman Argyle to adjourn to closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Thanks. We're adjourned. Appreciate everybody watching tonight and coming tonight.